Hello and welcome to our broadcast brought to you by Lake Cam, Lakeville's Community Access Channels. My name is Katie Goodfellow and I'm currently the Town Moderator and a near lifelong resident of Lakeville. This evening, I'm interviewing Richard LaCamera for the position of on the Board of Selectmen. This position has garnered a lot of interest and we have six individuals who have filed their paperwork to be considered for the position. We have heard a few questions for this interview to help the citizens of Lakeville learn more about our candidates. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer the same questions and they have not been told these questions in advance. We encourage voters to attend the Selectmen Candidate Forum and that is scheduled for October 16th at 7:00 PM in the Great Ponds Gallery of the Lakeville Library. The forum will also be available on Lake Cam's government channel Comcast 9 or Verizon 31 and on Vimeo.com/LakeCam. Welcome, Richard.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today. I'm going to get right into it and ask you some questions. First, would you take a moment to share your background and why you're interested in running for this position?
Okay. I've lived in Lakeville for 45 years and with my wife Susan, my four children, and I've always been involved, you know, in town government. I've been in municipal government for 34 years, serving various boards and committees. And I think it's important, once again, that I get involved in the community because there's some issues that I think need to be addressed and there's going to be some challenges going forward.
Why do you think the voters should consider you the best candidate for the position?
I have, like I said, 34 years of experience in municipal government that include 16 years on the Finance Committee, nine years on the Board of Selectmen, eight years as being the Town Administrator for the Town of Rochester, and I'm currently the Lakeville Librarian, so consistent for 34 years, I've been involved in municipal government and I want to continue to do that.
So you're on the Library Board?
Trustee, yeah.
Trustee?
Board of Trustees, yeah.
So that really was my third question about elaborating your service, which you just did very well. So I'm going to get right into question four, which is what do you think are the most pressing issues facing the Town of Lakeville and what would you do on the board to address them?
Well, I've done 25 years of budgets and I looked at the fiscal budget that just passed this past June and I'm very concerned about sustaining that budget with the revenues that have been used in the 20 budget is going to be very difficult to match in the fiscal 21 budget. Number two, I'm concerned that, you know, just over the last few years, we've had over 300 housing permits approved and that's a very significant number in a short period of time, which will have an effect on the services, fire, police, schools, and so forth. And the third issue is that I want to make sure that the town residents are respected and the town employees as well, to try to keep them informed as best I can as to what's going on.
What role do you see the board playing in preserving the town, the character of the Town of Lakeville? And what should we continue to preserve and what do we need to consider changing?
Well, I was on the Board of Selectmen, well, first of all, let's start back, in 1982. I was the Chairman of the Finance Committee when we purchased Ted Williams Camp and, you know, a lot of people would say, "Why are we purchasing Ted Williams Camp with a bunch of baseball fields?" And I said, at a town meeting, as former Selectmen Thicket had said, that this is the future of the Town of Lakeville. This is the center of the Town of Lakeville. And boy, did we see that, you know, with all of the buildings, we've got the new police station, we're in the new police station that's over here, we've got the COA on this property, we also have the library, which is probably one of the most beautiful libraries in southeastern Massachusetts. And when we decided to move forward that project, we actually laid out where we want town buildings to be, whether it's a fire station or a town office building. So that investment was $2.6 million and that included the tennis club and we wound up selling the tennis club after that. But the townspeople had absolutely no problem supporting, overwhelmingly supporting that project. The second thing was when I was on the Board of Selectmen in 2002, the opportunity to buy Betty's Neck, which is a 483 piece of land that's on the pond, the Assawampsett Pond Complex. And the same thing applied that, you know, we negotiated along with, you know, Nancy Yeat, who was passionate on the Conservation Commission, that we tried to preserve that. And we got a significant amount of grand money to buy that piece of property and we paid $1.1 million to buy that property. And along with that came conservation land, our protection along the waterfront of all of the pond complex of over 2,000 acres. So that was very significant. So yes, I'm interested in preserving, you know, the town's rural character. It's a little more difficult today, you know, to do that. There's not a lot of large parcels. You have to be very strategic on which parcels you want to protect. I'm concerned about the Ocean Spray property down on 18. They have hundreds of acres down there on 18 and so I'm concerned about that piece. I think that's about it for now.
We actually have quite a lot of time left, so...
Okay.
Was there anything that you might want to add that I haven't asked that you really feel is important to convey to the people of Lakeville?
Okay. Well, one of the most important things that I think needs to be addressed is maintaining the open communication with the town residents, other boards, and employees. We just recently had an override vote for the Route 79 and it was quite obvious that overwhelming got defeated and people didn't know what they were voting for. And I think that in order to get people to understand what they're voting for, we need to have more forums and better explanation, you know, as to what is being voted on. The same thing, you know, would apply to as far as the employees are concerned. Now, let the employees know what's going on, you know, what needs to be addressed, what needs to be fixed, personnel policies and procedures. Those need to be reviewed and need to be updated. So those are some of the concerns, one, a couple of the concerns that I'm concerned about. And of course, I had, you know, committed to maintaining Lakeville's rural character and infrastructure. You know, some people say, "Oh geez, you know, what'd you build this police station for?" Had to build this police station, you know? I mean, this is an important thing that needed to be addressed. It was on the capital plan back in 2006 and finally, you know, it got addressed recently. But, you know, I've been fortunate to serve on the Aponequod High School Renovation and Building Committee, the Middle School Building Committee, the COA Building Committee, the Library Building Committee, and recently, the Police Station Building Committee. Those things are important. Not only are they important, but they also got to maintain them. And I think one of the things that the town hasn't done on a regular basis is maintain, you know, some of their facilities. I also, you know, appreciate and support the importance of quality education. All four of my children went to Lakeville schools. They all went on to college and they've all done very well. And I think that, you know, a good school system is very, very important to the community and I want to make sure that we maintain that quality, you know, of education, you know, as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your thoughts and your comments. And I know that the voters of Lakeville really appreciate your taking the time to meet with us today.
No problem.
And I will remind everyone that we have the Board of Selectmen Candidate Forum on the 16th and I encourage everyone to come to that, which incidentally is the last day you may register to vote in the special town election slated for November 5th. Thank you and we'll see you at the polls. Hello and welcome to our broadcast brought to you by Lake Cam, Lakeville's Community Access Channels. My name is Katie Goodfellow and I'm currently the Town Moderator and a near lifelong Lakeville resident. This evening, I'm interviewing Sylvester Zinkowitz for the open seat on the Board of Selectmen. This position has garnered a lot of interest and six individuals have filed paperwork to be considered for this election. We've prepared a few questions for this interview for the citizens of Lakeville to learn more about our candidates. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer the same set of questions and have not been told these questions in advance. In addition, we encourage voters to attend the Selectmen Candidate Forum scheduled for October 16th at 7:00 PM in the Great Ponds Gallery of the Lakeville Library. The forum will also be available on Lake Cam's government channel Comcast 9 or Verizon 3 and on Vimeo.com/LakeCam. So welcome, Sylvester.
Thank you.
And thank you for meeting with me today. The first question we have for you is would you take a moment to share your background and why you're interested in running for the open seat on the Board of Selectmen?
My background is pretty long by now. Got about 45 years in construction as a carpenter or a cabinet maker, superintendent. And then after I retired from that, I went to teach in public schools. And my last job was a, I was a shop teacher at Everett High School. And retired about nine years ago. Currently, I'm on the planning board, have been for the last 10 years. And I'm interested in that. It's a, it's a board that works pretty well. If you watch us on TV, you'll see that everybody participates. We're, we seem to be really into it and it's a, it's not, it's not what people think. It's not like we plan anything. We're more a Board of Survey where we keep track of what happens to people, people's property lines and occasionally, we can have some sort of opinion on something, but the opinion doesn't count for anything. So I also sit on the Master Plan Implementation Committee or the Master Plan Committee for at least the last five years, maybe six years. That too, I think it's easier, there's amazing numbers, there's an awful lot of numbers available that make, that help you realize what's going on in town and why it's happening. And they're free and you get to, you know, you get to read them and you can change your own mind about how things go. You can see how Lakeville's aging. Lakeville is still growing though. At the same time, 1% or 2%, we're losing 1% or 2% of the school age kids every single year. So there's a lot to, there's a lot to think about as, you know, where, where your effort is going to go and where your money is going to go and how it changes from, how it will change from year to year. And if you see it long enough and far enough back, you'll see that these, these trends are absolutely inexorable. I mean, they, they're traveling in a direction and they're not going to turn around. This, this is the way it's going to go. You can see it and you might as well deal with it instead of using all of the, you know, the ideas you have in the back of your head about how many people, how many kids belong to a house and stuff like that. It's not, that many kids don't belong in a house anymore. I mean, we know because we've counted them. I served on the Water Advisory Board and I think I made a real difference there. I had a very good committee with, I mean, a very smart committee with me. And I think through a lot of hard work and this is stuff that the town wouldn't see, but a lot of pushing behind the, you know, behind the scenes to the people that, you know, ran the town at the time. We're the reason that we don't own the water tower anymore, but we still use the water tower, you know, every day. We still have, the water tower was necessary, but owning it wasn't necessary. What else do I do?
I actually have a question about that.
Oh, okay.
So I'm going to just jump in and say, change up the questions a little. Why do you think voters should consider you the best candidate for this position?
I know a lot of stuff and I know a lot of people in this, like, after I retired, you know, before I retired, I was still working two jobs and I didn't have any time for Lakeville. I just noticed that one, one of the Lake Cam, I noticed on Lake Cam that there was something so amiss with the water tower that I just had to get into it. I just couldn't, I just couldn't resist staying away. And I met a bunch of people that way. I know an awful lot of people in Town Hall. I, I go to a town meeting and in the last 10 years, I'm at a town meeting in front of this camera, you know, roughly one day a week for the last 10 years. I mean, I'm just, I'm here a lot. And I see, I'm not happy with how Town Hall is, has been operating over the past year. And I'd like, and I'd like to change that, change that up a bit. We have all new people there and I think it's awfully, awfully important to get them started on the right foot. They don't have, they don't have Rita there anymore to ask what we used to do, if you wanted to do what you used to do. But, but still, I mean, they're off on a new, on a new start and I think they need all the help, all the help they can get. Being retired, I can, I can put a lot of effort into it. And yeah, I can put a lot of effort into it, that's why.
Thank you. So you already touched on this a little bit, but I'll probe a little bit more about your prior experience in serving the town. So how would your experience help you in this position? I think you've already explained a little bit about that, but would you like to say a little more to that question?
Okay, well, I didn't quite finish. I was on the, I was on the Old Colony School Committee for five years and I, there, they use a big, a big board and we had subcommittees. The subcommittee that I was with was the Budget Committee and I finished up there as being Chair of the Budget Committee. There, absolutely made a difference. We had, it is, it is running so nicely now compared to, compared to what it was and I just, the, it took a lot of effort and it took a lot of, just showing up and, you know, and attaboying and things like that and just providing a lot of hours, you know, to be there to give people, to support people as they're making, as they're making dramatic changes. They made dramatic changes in their entire business outlook and they made quite a few changes in their academic.
Okay. What do you think are the most pressing issues facing the Town of Lakeville and what, what do you think the board should be addressing?
I, what I would like to, let's see, what I would like to address, let's see, what's first? What I would like to address would be, I think we need more planning, not planning, but we need more, I learned that writing it down, writing it down and writing it down and handing it out and, you know, just, just doing a lot of paperwork helps an organization a lot. It just plain gets more people involved and it keeps you on a schedule better and stuff like that than this business of, well, we're going to do it by common sense. Well, better off with a, you know, with a schedule and a, you know, to-do list and, you know, action items and things like that than this, this common sense approach. The, we're developing a little bit too fast. We're going at somewhere around 6% right now and not when you consider that you're almost going, that you're almost losing 2% of the kids. That means you're actually like, you know, gaining 8% of old folks. And you're going to have to deal with that many, the kind of housing that we have, that we're building right now. And what we have in our zoning bylaw is set up for families with children. You know, that's, this three-bedroom, 2,500 square foot, 3,000 square, that sort of, that's set up for children and we need less of them, but it's the only thing we have in our bylaw right now. The only alternative we have to that is a 40R or 40B, which is maybe a little smaller than a lot of people in town would like. So it's, it's going to, these, these things are going to continue to push against each other. And because we still, there's certainly room for more housing, but not everywhere. And it's a, and it's a big political thing because if everyone's sitting on 70,000 square foot lots, that's what they expect out of the whole street and the whole neighborhood and things like that. So it's not good to be mixing housing everywhere. So it's, it's a, it's a difficult, it's a difficult thing and it has to be dealt with, with each separate, each separate project as it gets proposed. The problem is, I mean, we have people that think that, well, they don't like a dollar store. Well, what we had there was, it's zoned for business. They put it in the right zone, they have the right size lot, they have the right setbacks. There's absolutely nothing, nothing, nothing that you can do about that except you might as well encourage it because that's what 40 years ago, you decided it was going to be business. Well, now here comes a business and you, and you better be happy about it. The same, the same thing happens with, when there's open space, these open space ideas and stuff like that. Well, if you own it, you can have open space. If you, so what the board can do is, one of these times when some of the chapter land comes out of, comes out of chapter land, if it happens to be a useful project, you could actually, you know, think about getting the town to buy it. Now you have to go through, you know, the whole town meeting business and stuff like that, but that's, which makes it go slower, which makes it more difficult to find, you know, enough developers that will be willing to do that for you and stuff like that because they all, they all want to do something in the next four weeks. But as long as everyone's just pushing slightly toward, you know, if we all kind of approve it sooner or later, you know, one gets built. There won't, there won't be a lot of them, but we have to get some way of getting some more housing built that isn't 70,000 square foot.
Well, this, the last, well, second to the last question that we have for you actually ties in very nicely to what you were just talking about, which was what role do you see the board playing in preserving the character of the Town of Lakeville? What should we continue to preserve and what should we consider changing? Would you care to elaborate more on that or do you feel like, kind of just answered that with the other question?
I'm not, I'm not sure what, you know, how much, of course, I'm sure. I know how much control you have and I, it's not a, politically a great thing to run on, but we don't, you don't have a lot of things you can promise people. With, the town doesn't, doesn't own a lot of land. I know several lots that the state owns that would be useful for, that could be useful for a, say, elderly housing. They're large lots, they're close enough to town water and they're big enough that you could do their own sewage. It's, in Lakeville, it's not that easy to find lots for, for dense housing because we don't have many, we don't have many places that have town water and the, and the septic problem is one that you, you have to build your own as you go. And that, that'll be the way, no one's expanding septic systems anymore. That's just the way it's going to be everywhere in the country. There are, you know, mini systems now that get built along with whatever's proposed and they, they're just difficult to finance. Eventually, eventually the project gets to the point where it can make money and then they finance it and everything works. But, but, but right now, as long as there are options to it here in Lakeville, they'll just keep putting it, you know, just putting it into the ground.
Okay.
I can keep talking.
Yeah.
I don't know if you noticed.
That, well, this is, this is important. It's all important.
And I'm not sure, you want to ask me that one again because I don't think I...
Well, the, we had one, this would, this will allow you to do that. Anything that you additionally felt was important to share with the town?
We really need a town planner. That's, if you vote for me and I win, we're going to get a town planner because it'll, it'll help a lot to sell ideas and to, well, and to throw away ideas and stuff like that. It just, things will move a lot faster through the process of, oh, I wonder what they're doing over there and I wonder why they're not doing it here and things like that. We can just be a, that can work a lot better and if there's some community support, there are some more things we can do. Also, we have to have a, a housing, a housing authority. The town voted to have a housing authority, but it has never, this, this one doesn't even cost anything, but it has never assigned one because people were saying, "Oh, it's going to be, you know, free housing, free," you know, and just, just weird, weird ideas. But right now, we have, we have to give that work to the middle borough people to just do the lotteries for the affordable housing and stuff like that. We have some money that we get in lieu of, in lieu of building out affordable housing. Sometimes we get a payment from the, from the developer and we've just put that aside, but, but those things can work toward something and especially, it's so, what we have, one of the good things we have here in Lakeville is we have some, is that the land doesn't cost too much. This isn't like Belmont or where everything's already used up. There are places where you can get a decent deal on, on a nice looking piece of land where people would like to live and stuff like that and that's the advantage we have. We have, we're not a farming community, we're a bedroom community. What we do best is build bedrooms right now. I don't know if you noticed the construction. I don't know if you noticed the construction and stuff like that, but what we're best at is building bedrooms for our people, and then they, they go off and work wherever. But you, you should, you should take advantage of what you have and, and enjoy it, you know, that's the, the, yeah.
Thank you. And thank you very much for joining me today and sharing your thoughts. I know that the people of Lakeville really appreciate your taking the time to be with us. And I will remind everyone that the Board of Selectmen Forum, Candidate Forum will be held on October 16th, which is also the last day you can register to vote in the special town election, which is slated for November 5th. We'll see you at the polls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, and welcome to our broadcast, brought to you by LakeCam, Lakeville's Community Access Channels. My name is Joanne, and today I will be interviewing Jesse Medford for the open seat on the Board of Selectmen. This position has garnered a lot of interest. We have six individuals who have filed their paperwork to be considered for election. We have prepared a few questions to help the citizens of Lakeville learn more about the candidates. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer the same questions. In addition, we encourage voters to attend the Selectmen Candidate Forum, scheduled for October 16th, which is a Wednesday evening, 7:00 PM, in the Great Ponds Gallery of the Lakeville Library. The forum will also be available on LakeCam's government channel, Comcast 9, or Verizon 31, and also on Vimeo.com/LakeCam. Welcome, Jesse, and thank you for meeting with me. And I'll have six questions, as I said. And the first one is, would you take a moment to share your background and why you are interested in running for the open seat on the Board of Selectmen?
Well, okay. My name is Jesse Medford. I've been in Lakeville, originally moved here 2001. I've been taking part in other town committees and boards for a few years now, and I've just been seeing how things go in the city or in the town, and I just want to contribute more. I've noticed a lot of the community members have, you know, a lot of disapproval with the way things are going, and I think my beliefs align a lot with, with the people that have been speaking up, and a lot of surveys that the town committees put out there say that they want to keep the, the area rural, keep that charm, and that's something that I strive to do, too. And with, with my past experiences with the Open Space Committee and the Park Commission, I, I think that lines up perfectly with what I've been seeing the other community members want here in Lakeville. So I thought I'd, I'd step up a little more than I've already been doing, and I put my, put my name into the ring here, competing against six others for this position, and, you know, I just, just want to help out as much as I can.
Okay, great. The next question is, why do you think voters should consider you the best candidate for the position?
Well, I have a, a leadership background, a management degree. I'm in the Massachusetts Army National Guard, I'm a First Sergeant. I served 28 years so far, total time between active duty and National Guard. And I, I think that I, I step up a lot, I, I take the lead, and I listen well, and it's two-way communication between me and the community. I think I've already shown that plenty, and I think that's what a good leader does, and I think that's what the, the town of Lakeville is, is looking for. I don't think they have that type of leadership in the board right now, and I'd like to bring those qualities here to Lakeville and, and just help out as much as I can with that.
Okay. Well, I'm going to thank you for your service, and go on to question number three. Can you elaborate on any prior experience that you have serving the town? Because you did mention that you do, but just elaborate. How would this experience help you in this position, which you sort of have already touched on?
Right.
But just elaborate maybe a little more, like, point out to a couple of different actual things that you did.
Okay. Well, on the Open Space Committee, I've been doing that for about three years now. Recently have taken over as the chair, when the previous chair was stepping down and didn't seem anyone else wanted the position, and I figured I've, I've taken a couple of years of, of learning how to be a part of the committee, and now it was time for me to step up from, I was a clerk at the time, and it was time to step up to the, to the next role, when, when they wanted someone to lead them. And, you know, recently, we've, we've had some priority areas of the town that we're trying to, to protect, and something I've stepped up to do recently is get the committee together and in agreement, and, you know, we, we all seem to agree, we, we need to be more proactive, write more letters to the town, and, you know, emphasize that these are priority areas for, for Lakeville to protect. And we have seven priority areas, and it seems like every other month or so, a new one of them is getting, they, they want to develop it, or, you know, or-
Take the open space away.
Exactly. They're trying to take the space away. And on the Open Space Committee, you know, it's our role to, you know, to give our recommendations to the other boards and committees, and based on the research that we've been doing for, you know, the last so many years. Right now, we are working on a new open space plan. Every seven years, it needs to be updated, and we're working on that right now. And, you know, it's just emphasizing the parts of Lakeville that, that are most important to the community through surveys and interaction at, at meetings and, and things like that. So it's, it's just that the current board we had was, was looking for someone to step up and, and help lead them this way, and I think from the feedback I get through the town, they're looking for the same type of leadership to, to preserve Lakeville as they've always known it, and how they, they see it deteriorating away, and, you know, a lot of people's point of view that a lot of building going on in Lakeville is, is not what most people, from what I'm hearing, want to see. And I, I think my, my leadership and how vocal I am of being against that is exactly what the Board of Selectmen need. They don't have anybody with, you know, that point of view, at least they're not expressing that point of view right now. And I think that's where I would fit in, and the experience I've gained through, through that committee would, would help out a lot for the people of Lakeville.
Okay, all right. Did you want to mention anything you've done on any other board?
Well, I was elected this year to the Park Commission. This year, I was the liaison to Clear Pond Park. You know, the first year, it seems that I got the easiest job that pretty much ran itself. The director there is, is great. I, I didn't really have to step in too much.
So it's really a learning position for you right now?
Yeah, the first, first year was definitely learning. You know, we, we had some community feedback, we got them involved, and the, what improvements they think can be made for, for Clear Pond Park, how can we make it so it is more break-even in the future? Because the Park Commission is an enterprise fund, the, it's not paid for with tax dollars here. So we're, we're trying to find a way to make it so Clear Pond Park isn't spending more than it's making. And, you know, right now, it just, season ended a little over a month ago, so we're gathering all the data together and going to formulate plans for, for next year to, to make it run smoother. And that has been my involvement this year for, for the most part.
Okay, all right. Next question is, what do you think are the most pressing issues facing the town of Lakeville today, and what would you do on the board to help address them?
Well, the, the most pressing issue, I think, is the taxes keep increasing. A lot of this is due to the, the new building that has been going on constantly over the last few years. The, the people of Lakeville have been voting recently, they, they did not want a new road with, with sidewalks and proper drainage that, you know, was, was voted against. Clearly, we need a new road. The people of Lakeville did not want the sidewalks for the most part. So it's being addressed to have the state pay for, hopefully, if possible, just paving without the sidewalks. And, you know, I, I would like to bring my point of view to the board, how we, when, before bringing these things to a vote, try to make it a way that the people of Lakeville will want it. I think the previous board put out a plan that was obviously going to be voted down. It was, it was doomed from the start, and I'd like to bring the point of view where I feel like I, I listen to the people of Lakeville as opposed to direct them of how this should be done, and I, I think I can, I can help out in that manner.
Okay. Next question. What role do you see the board playing in preserving the character of the town of Lakeville? In other words, what should we continue to preserve, and what do we need to consider change?
Well, I'm talking a lot about open space. We definitely need to preserve the open space and the parks. You know, we have a lot of farmland here, they're, they're trying to build on as much as possible. We have-
And you mean building houses, not necessarily businesses?
Right, right. Trying to build houses. Between the MBTA and the Masquet, we have developers who, they're on town boards, and they are finding ways to develop this open space where they should be on these boards and trying to find ways to preserve this open space. You know, look at 5 and 9 Harding Street, just new deals, same town officials are looking to, to build on that. They're trying to change the zoning, business, residential, and they're involved in making these decisions, too, and they're going to benefit from that. That shouldn't be happening, and, and town officials should not be doing that.
So you see that as a priority as a selectman?
It is priority. We, we need transparency. If you have more transparency, people are not going to be trying to get away with making the decisions. They may step aside, and, you know, they're not taking the vote themselves, but the people that are on the boards with them are taking it for them. I think it makes the entire board look bad, not just the town official that is benefiting from it. And when the whole board looks bad, the whole town looks bad, and, and we're losing the town in the process.
Okay. Last question for you. Is there anything else, oh, of course, is there anything else that you would like to add that you feel is important to share with the town that you haven't already discussed?
Well, I didn't answer on the previous question, actually, what should change in this town?
Yeah, what would you like, consider changing?
Right. I don't think anything should change. I think the point is, keep it the same as much as possible. I, I don't want to, to add anything to the town, I don't want to take anything away. I think the town should stay exactly like it is, taxes should not continue to rise, and a lot of spending has been going on that needs to be, be dialed back. And, and for the final question, what have I not mentioned? You know, I, I think I hit a lot of topics in a-
You did.
-quick amount of time.
You did.
And I, I think everybody knows how serious I am about this, preserving the rural character of, of Lakeville. And I, I think every one of the candidates is going to say this. They know this is a very important talking point. And I think their reputations, if you look them up, will show that they are big on building, big on buying town property, and they are not big on preserving. And the boards I am on are all about preserving. My history is, I will be vocal about preserving, I will do what I can to preserve this land for the people of Lakeville, and I'm not going to buy land, I'm not going to build on land. Unless I find that the people of Lakeville are for added building, I will not be voting for added building. And I don't think the people of Lakeville, for the most part, are into the idea of building more new infrastructure. There may be certain cases where the voters will say, this is urgent now, and I will listen to the voters, and I think I've already shown that I will communicate with them, they will know what's going on in Town Hall. Town Hall has talked to me about talking too much already. Well, I'm not going to be listening to that. I will still be talking to the people of Lakeville, I will be listening to the people of Lakeville, and that's what you will get if you vote for Jesse Medford for Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank you, Jesse, for taking the time to talk to me, and for giving me your thoughts and your comments. I want to remind the voters again of Lakeville that we appreciate you taking the time to speak with us today, and I also want to remind everyone, to include you, about the Selectmen Candidate Foreman, Foreman, Forum that will be held on October 16th, which is a Wednesday, at 7:00 PM, which is also the last day that everyone can register to vote. And voting will take place on Tuesday, November 5th, at Ted Williams Camp, as always. We will see you at the polls. Hello, and welcome to our broadcast, brought to you by LakeCam, Lakeville's Community Access Channels. My name is Joanne, and today I will be interviewing Joseph Fleming for the open seat of the Board of Selectmen. This position has garnered a lot of interest. We have six individuals who have filed their paperwork to be considered for the election. We have prepared a few questions to help the citizens of Lakeville learn more about each of the candidates. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer the same questions. In addition, we encourage voters to attend the Selectmen Candidate Forum, which is scheduled for Wednesday, October 16th, at 7:00 PM, inside the Great Ponds Gallery at the Lakeville Library. The forum will also be available on LakeCam's government channel, which is Comcast 9 or Verizon 31, and on Vimeo.com/LakeCam. Welcome, Joseph, and I thank you for meeting with me. I'm going to have about six questions to ask you.
Okay, sure.
All right?
Okay.
And the first one is, would you take a moment to share your background and why you're interested in running for the open seat on the Board of Selectmen?
Sure. My interest is obviously to give back to the community. As before, when I ran for Treasurer Collector for April 2019, I had that same aspiration to get involved in the community again. I had served, as noted before, April 2015 through 2018 on Lakeville's Finance Committee. I took a shot at Treasurer Collector election, I had a great time doing it, it was a complete grassroots campaign for me, had a lot of fun, and here I am again. I'm just trying to help out. I went to the Board of Selectmen's meeting on August 26th, expressed my interest for the actual position. As far as my expertise, I have about 16 years of hands-on finance experience. With the level of, say, Chief Financial Officer, I also have a master's degree in management, which will leverage my expertise in management, process improvement, you know, people, and it's not just the numbers, it's about building cohesion within the town. So that's a little bit about my background for those who don't know me.
Okay. The next question is, why do you think voters should consider you the best candidate for the position?
Well, I know there's a lot of candidates out there, and I, I know that they all have their own skill sets, and they bring a lot to the table, but I think it's good that Lakeville actually has a diverse group. Me in particular, as I said, I'm a numbers guy, but I'm a people-process guy. You know, I listen to all parties, I take everything into consideration to basically come out with the best outcome for the community. And again, my campaign is running on people, not politics, and it is all about the, the people. And I, if I am elected, I would basically, you know, administer and facilitate that process to basically be the voice of the people, while obviously facilitating the officers that make up the town of Lakeville as well.
Okay. Can you elaborate on any prior experience that you have had serving the town, and how this experience will help you in this position?
Sure. Well, I mean, I believe in lifelong learning. I think when you, every day is a learning experience. Again, running for Treasurer Collector in April was a learning experience for me. I consult, so I actually see a lot of different things on how they're being done from a municipal standpoint to corporate America, and basically leveraging my experience to say, okay, you know, what has, what have we tried in the past, how's it working, how can we relate to where we are now, and what are our future goals? So basically- So basically, you know, a little bit of everything to leverage my experience. But my door is always open.
Okay. What do you think are the most pressing issues facing the town of Lakeville today? And what would you do on the board to help address them?
Well, I think first base is just listening, you know, getting the lay of the land and continuing to get the lay of the land. By no means am I an expert at anything, but I do offer a broad skill set that I think I can apply. But again, is building those relationships, talking to the people that are actually doing the day-to-day job.
What do you think the issues are, though?
The issues? Well, again, I think there's a lot of change going on. And I think that is an actual opportunity because with a new town administrator, we're having a new board for the selectmen. And again, people are coming and going. The community needs are always changing. So basically, is being able to follow that bouncing ball and just address the issues that come up on, they could be tomorrow, they could be yesterday's, or, you know, a year from now. But just being a good listener, I think, is be huge.
And what role do you see the board playing in preserving the character of the town of Lakeville? In other words, what should we continue to preserve and what do you need to consider changing?
Well, I think the board is very important. I think they are actually responsible, and they should be the leadership as well as the voice of the town. I know firsthand, when I bought my house here six years ago with my wife and my family, I love the rural charm of Lakeville. I love about that. I love the people of Lakeville. I love the community and that, you know, that close feeling with our neighbors that we have and share while we're experiencing growth at the same time. So it's kind of like balancing the best of both worlds, where you don't want to overgrow, but you don't want to fall behind either. But I think I love the charm. I like, I love the schools. My kids are in the schools. But again, at the end of the day, it's, you know, as a Board of Selectmen, it's my job to make sure that the people are being represented fairly. And again, people, not politics.
Right. But what specifically would you like to continue to preserve?
I would like to
Or specifically, what do you want to change?
And again, to that point, you know, there's been a lot of building lately. There's a lot of new houses coming in. There's, you know, there's a lot of changes, you know. Again, preserving the rural charm of Lakeville. And I also want to make sure that, you know, people have that opportunity in the future, you know, so future generations get to experience that at the same time while leveraging growth as long as it's value-adding and as long as it's really ultimately what the people want. Because that's basically what the Board of Selectmen should do. They should do what the people want, not their own agendas.
Right. Is there anything else you'd like to add that you feel might be important to share with the town?
Well, I'm a regular guy, you know. I can talk to anybody, you know. Again, my door is always open and always will be. I'm all about building relationships and, again, you know, taking into the consideration what works for everybody. And again, listen to all parties and coming up with the best solution, not just what I think, but leveraging the experience of other people, other managers, as well as taxpayers, both young and old, and taking us to the next level. And hopefully, well, for me, in November 5th.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Joseph, for your thoughts and comments. I know the voters of Lakeville appreciate you taking the time
Thank you.
To speak with me. And I will remind everyone that the Selectman Candidate Forum will be held on October 16th, which is the last day that you can register to vote in the special town election, which is being held on Tuesday, November 5th. And we hope to see you at the polls. Hello, and welcome to our broadcast, brought to you by LakeCam, Lakeville's community access channels. My name is Joanne, and today I will be interviewing Brian Day for the open seat on the Board of Selectmen. This position has garnered a lot of interest. We have six individuals who have filed papers for consideration for the position. We have prepared a few questions to help the citizens of Lakeville learn more about the candidates. Each candidate will have an opportunity to answer the same questions. In addition, we encourage voters to attend the Selectman Candidate Forum, scheduled for Wednesday, October 16th, at 7:00 PM, in the Great Ponds Gallery of the Lakeville Library. The forum will also be available on LakeCam's government channel, Comcast 9 or Verizon 31, and on vimeo.com/LakeCam. Welcome, Brian, and thank you very much for meeting with me today. The first question is, would you take a moment to share your background and why you are interested in running for the open seat of the Board of Selectmen?
I'd be happy to. First, I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to be here tonight. I know there's a lot of work getting all of us together and getting all these schedules. So thank you for your time and for everybody at home watching us. It's really exciting to be here. I hope that everyone will consider me as a candidate for our seat. And a little bit about me, I'm originally from Rainham. I grew up there. A family of four, come from a working-class family where working with our hands was very respected. Very young age, hard work was respected, rewarded. It was something that was taught to us to say, you know what? If something's worth doing, it's probably going to be hard. So don't feel bad if you get into something and you feel nervous and you're not sure. Just go ahead and do it. You're probably doing something that is meaningful. Grew up there, had another, you know, my extended family was also a bunch of tradesmen. We had carpenters and nurses and machinists and all sorts of stuff. So I like to think that I've learned a little bit of everything in my time growing up there. Myself, I actually ended up going towards the computer technology spectrum, a little different, but also kind of a place where I could learn and thrive on my skill sets, where it all started with my parents bought this half-working computer and said, hey, we're going to get a computer for the house. And I think they found it at some yard sale somewhere. And it turned into, you know, me trying to learn, how do I fix this thing just to keep it operating? And that turned into just a lifetime of understanding how things work, breaking things to make them work again, to understand how they go. And that just turned into the career that I'm in now. So it all starts going back to talking municipal lighting plant. I worked for their ISP for a time doing phone support for them. Then I graduated from there into what probably was my most interesting experience to date, which was working for the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. I spent five years working for them. I was a systems administrator for them, where we essentially were helping support the entire state in all of our emergency response operations. So set up an electronic, what we called an emergency operations center system that all of our towns and federal agencies could essentially log into and exchange information during events. I was there for periods of many different blizzards, Boston marathons, we were always operational. I was there, unfortunately, for the 9/11 attacks. I was there for the DNC convention in 2004, which was a very security-focused convention as it was the first one after the attacks. It was just a very amazing opportunity to see what it takes to get a town like Lakeville, the resources they need when there's blizzards or floods or other unexpected events. And it was really a life-changing experience being there and still keeping contact with some of those folks that really enjoyed my time there. I then moved and spent my next five years working for the Commonwealth at what used to be called the Information Technology Division, since it's gone through a rebranding, I believe. I think it's called NASA IT now. And that's where I spent time, working on a number of statewide systems, supporting dozens of state agencies for tens of thousands of our employees there. Another fabulous time, learning how to work with limited resources, doing budgeting, having to learn, hey, you know, we went through a period of time where we kept having our budget trimmed by 2% or 3%, and how do we offer the same or better services every year with less money? How are we going to do it? And trying to find inventive ways to do that time and time again. During my time there, I was also recognized as one of less than 150 people worldwide by the Microsoft Corporation as what they called a most valuable professional, which essentially meant you're a leader in your technology field, you go out of your way to help people, you're bridging communities together to help people learn this technology and get it out there, which was a very humbling experience. Which actually then transitioned to my next role, which is with the Microsoft Corporation today. And my role there, I've been there for almost 10 years now. May will be 10 years, so I really have enjoyed my time there and changed roles a few times. But it's been a career there where it's always working with customers and understanding their needs and then going back to our folks internally and saying, here's what the customer needs, here's what we're hoping to deliver, but there's a gap here, guys. And how do we go about bridging this and delivering something that the customer is happy with while still attaining our goals? And it's afforded me an amazing opportunity to travel the nation, travel worldwide, and meet with customers of small sizes all the way up to Fortune 500 companies and get into rooms and talk to them about what are your challenges? What are we as a company doing well? What are we not doing as well? What would you like from us? And then working with them to find solutions. And very often, it's between teams that they might not have the same, you know, goal, even within the same company. Different business units might have different goals and things to try to achieve and trying to find that commonality and understand what are the things we need to deliver to help them reach them and make them more successful and what their mission might be, whatever it is. So, I mean, there's probably a bit more information that folks want to learn about me, but that's where I
Is that you in a nutshell?
It's a bit of a large nutshell, but it is. You know, I like to think of myself as someone who, when I get involved, I dive in, I try to learn everything. And for the things that I don't know, because we can't know everything, it's impossible, I'm more than happy to reach out to other people that are specialists in their field and draw on their knowledge and try to figure out, you know, what are the options before us?
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
The next question is, why do you think voters should consider you the best candidate for the position?
Well, I don't want to go about and say anything negative about the other ones. I think we have an amazing array of candidates in front of us to choose from. Even if I was just on the voting side alone this time, I'd be thrilled to see all the different choices we have. There's a lot of town and country service that is made up in that pool, and I thank all of them for that. You know, thank you for all of your time. But I would like to say that, you know, as a candidate, I think I'm someone that may come in and, you know, give you a new option, a new choice. I've spoken with a lot of folks out in the streets and around town, just kind of, you know, what are your concerns? What do you like? What don't you like about, you know, the options in front of you? A lot of people have said, you know, we wouldn't mind somebody that maybe doesn't have, you know, some of the history here because there's no opportunity for allegiances. I don't have an axe to grind. I don't, I'm not looking to right what somebody might perceive as the wrongs of decisions past. I'm just looking to get in, work with Selectmen Fabian, work with Selectmen Paardtley, and get work done. I'm going to come in with essentially what I would consider an unbiased mind. I'm going to look at the facts before us, weigh the evidence of all the trace we have to make, and essentially put things through a process in my head and say, you know, the things that we look at, they have to run through a certain criteria or a test, if you want to call them. Is it good for the town? Does it maintain the town's character? Is it financially responsible? And sometimes that means investing money to avoid bigger costs down the road. When sometimes, you know, nobody wants to spend another dollar. We all have budgets to live by, but if spending that dollar means saving 10 or 15 down the road, we should consider it. So hopefully, they'll find that I'm an unbiased person, I'm willing to do research, build the bridges, and look at things with an open mind.
Okay. Can you elaborate on any prior experience that you have serving the town? And how would this experience help you in this position?
Well, it's an interesting question for me. So my wife and I have only been in town three years so far. So this would actually be my first, this is my first chance at running for something in town. So I've not had the opportunity to serve on any boards yet to this time. I've had a number of folks come up to me over the past couple of years after talking at town meetings and such, saying, we really wish you'd get involved, it'd be great. Up until this point, I've kind of been a little like, eh, I'm new to town, people might not like that, but I'm over that now. I think it's fine. There's nothing wrong with that. And while I've not served in any sort of capacity in the town yet, which I'm looking forward to doing so hopefully by November 6th, I think my experience at the state level certainly has a lot of parallels to what we need at the local level. And I hope people will take that into consideration when they think about me as a candidate.
Okay. What do you think are the most pressing issues facing the town of Lakeville today? And what would you do if you were on the board to help address them?
A lot of hot topics right now. Everybody has what they feel is their biggest topic that's going on. So maybe I'll hit a couple of them if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
So there's a lot of debate, obviously, about all the new cannabis-based businesses right now. It's a new market. Everybody's a little uncertain on what's going to happen. To date, I would say, I believe the current and former Board of Selectmen members have been relatively respectful of the process that the Commonwealth has set up for establishing, you know, these businesses. And I would continue with kind of that slow-paced approach, I believe, where I'm personally not against the businesses being here. The Commonwealth passed the law. It is now a legal product and business to be involved with here. And I think we should play by the rules as much as the businesses are coming forward and playing by the rules. So I certainly don't want to say, hey, let's go and build a community host agreement with 40 different companies and just see what happens. Like, that's just, that's silly. We wouldn't do that for anything, whether it's a nail salon or a liquor store, any business. But these host community agreements also give us a short-term period to look at, how did it do? I forget the specific number. I think it's a five-year expiration where, you know, we can do a few of them for now and five years from now. If it didn't work for the town, whatever we define as work being, or we decide that the business wasn't a good community partner, we don't have to renew it. We can say, thank you for the opportunity, but it's not something we're interested in moving forward with. To get onto a different topic, there's been a lot of conversation on building in town. There's folks that are saying, hey, you know, we see a lot of kind of these dense housing units going up. What's happening? I think of Lakeville as being a, you know, white picket fence and single-family housing town. Are we losing our identity? Are we changing? What's going on? And I think one of the things that doesn't get out enough is that the Commonwealth has established a law that says you have to have at least 10% affordable housing in your town, right? If we don't abide by Chapter 40B and get to that quota, we essentially lose some form of control over, you know, these building projects coming in, right? We have some say, but not as much as you could if we were at that 10%. So, I mean, it's something that we have limited control over. I believe with the projects that are going on now or have been approved, we're going to be right at that 9% or 10% level, which hopefully will give us the capability to go to the state and say, hey, we're there, right? Can we come to an agreement that we've met our quota? And that's good, and that's fine. I mean, the people that are living there are residents too, right? They're all part of the community. They're going to schools. They're coming to our businesses. They're all supporting us. And I welcome in here, and, you know, we all can learn something from everybody that's in town. So I don't think people should get too flustered over those. And when we get to the 10%, we can then take another look at how we continue going forward. I don't want to put a high-rise in every corner of the town because one of the reasons we moved here was we liked the rural nature of the town. I drive down here through winter, and it feels like a New England postcard, for crying out loud. I mean, we want to keep that.
Yes, it does.
So, you know, but let's find a way to do it smartly, right? So when these projects come in, I don't think the default answer should be no. I mean, the default answer should be, does it make sense for the town? Do we have a need? We have a lot of residents in town that perhaps are looking to downsize but want to stay in town. Where are they going to move? They might not be able to afford to stay in their single-family home with tax rates and such. So give them the opportunity to move into a smaller place, but stay here so they can keep using the council and aging facility, so they can still be near their families and go to their kids' soccer games. Like, I don't want to force people to move out of town simply because we've not provided them with housing that is affordable to them. So I'll stick to those two for now.
Okay. That's fine. That's good.
I tend to be wordy, so I apologize.
That's okay. What role do you see the board playing in preserving the character of the town of Lakeville? And what should we continue to preserve and what do we need to change?
So touching on some of the points I've made before, but I think they're important to bring up again. The board, I believe, sets, you know, kind of a direction for the town, but we then look at our Open Space Committee, our Conservation Committee, and all the other ones in town that are full of great people doing hard work, to, you know, look at them and say, does this make sense for us? Where are we trending? You know, even though I'm only a candidate at this point, I've already gone and set up time with some of our town department heads because I want to hear their State of the Union, so to say. You know, are school systems truly overloaded? Or is that a perhaps overstated thing? You know, are we going to bring in these housing projects and then, you know, we suddenly have class sizes that are 45 kids? have class sizes that are 45 kids? We don't want to do that. So I think the board really needs to kind of set the course, but everybody else is who we're going to lean on for their expertise to say, this makes sense for the town, this doesn't make sense for the town, and weigh those options, and trust that they know what they're doing, and make an informed opinion.
Okay. Is there anything that you specifically feel should be preserved or changed?
Well, I think a lot of what we have is great. I love the downtown area. I wouldn't mind it being a little bit more accessible, perhaps, you know, some sidewalks in a few places, so we can get to things like, you know, so we live down off of Montgomery Street, and if we want to go to Ted Williams Camp, you know, we're just walking on the side of the road with nothing between us and whatever speeding vehicle goes by. So I think there's some opportunities in town where we have a lot of great resources, but we can make them more accessible to folks. So if you want to walk your kids on Halloween for trick-or-treating, you've got a safer option to do so. I think there is also opportunity where maybe there's things in town we could look at adding. I've had folks that say, I would love an off-leash dog park. Maybe that's something we look into. I don't know, anything, any idea, anything the residents want to suggest, I think, is fair game, and we can look into those things. Farmer's market. I know there's been things spoken about, perhaps trying to start one up at the Ted Williams Camp. Great idea. Look at how successful the 15th Annual Arts and Music Festival was this last year. There's plenty of people looking to come and show all their amazing wearis-off. Be great if we had a place to house them and do that. So I think what we have is great. Keep the character like it is as much, but can we identify certain projects that would just add to it and make people want to stay here even longer?
Okay. Is there anything else that you want to add that you feel is important to share with the town?
Well, if we're wrapping up, I just want to say thank you very much for everybody that's helped get me to this point here. It was great meeting with people in front of Baldi's and Savvas and all the Dance Moms that came to our support. It's just kind of amazing to see how much support is out there, that when you start off, you're like, hmm, well, I got my two neighbors, now what? So it was, it was an amazing opportunity. For the folks that haven't gone through it, you essentially have to go through and get 54-plus or more registered voter signatures. And it was amazing going through that process and learning things from everybody, all sorts of different, people of different means and lifestyles and such, and you all had really good things to say. I'd like to be the person to take the opportunity of moving those ideas forward and presenting them to the different town committees. I'm going to bring what I believe is an unbiased and rational thought process to the board. I'm not saying there's not one there now, but as a third member of a three-person board, I think it's important that that's the kind of thinking we have. And I hope I can bring my experience both at the, the local, the state, and the private sector world to bear. Looking forward to doing it. I hope we're successful, and I thank everybody for their opportunity.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Brian, for your thoughts and your comments. I know the voters of Lakeville appreciate you taking the time to talk to us today. And I'm going to remind everyone that the Selectmen Candidates Forum is going to be held on Wednesday evening, October 16th, inside the Great Ponds Gallery at the Lakeville Public Library. And it's also the last day that you can register to vote for the special town election, which is being held on Tuesday, November 5th. And I will see you all at the polls. Hello, and welcome to our broadcast brought to you by LakeCam, Lakeville's community access channels. My name is Joanne, and today I will be interviewing Mark Knox for the open seat on the Board of Selectmen. This position has garnered a lot of interest. We have had six individuals who have filed their paperwork for considering this position for election. We have prepared a few questions to help the citizens of Lakeville learn about the candidates, and each candidate will have an, will have an opportunity to answer the same questions. In addition, we encourage the voters to attend the Selectmen Candidate Forum, which will take place and is scheduled on Wednesday, October 16th at 7:00 PM inside the Great Ponds Gallery of the Lakeville Public Library. The forum will also be available on LakeCam's government channel, Comcast 9 or Verizon 31, and on Vimeo.com/LakeCam. Welcome, Mark, and thank you for meeting with me.
Thank you for having me.
All right. And my first question is, would you take a moment to share your background and why you are interested in running for the open seat on the Board of Selectmen?
Sure. Well, I, my parents moved to Lakeville when I was one, so I've been, I consider myself a Lakeville resident for about 46 years. I did move away for a couple of years when I couldn't afford a home in Lakeville when me and my wife got married. We lived in an apartment in Rainham for a short period. As soon as we could, we moved back when we could afford a place. We raised our children here, and we still reside here. I own and operate a business in town, have about 11 employees. Probably six years ago, I took interest in taking part in civics in the town. I currently sit on the Conservation Commission, and I'm a member of the Planning Board. I enjoy offering my time for service to the town. Both those positions are unpaid. I think that's about it. I mean, it's in a nutshell.
In a nutshell, okay. Why do you think the voters should consider you the best candidate for the position?
Well, I'm physically conservative. I think I, through my success in business, proven that I can run and manage a business and handle the responsibilities of, you know, making the ends meet with the means you have. I'm articulate, I think I can speak well to people and get my point across well. Understand an issue at hand and try not to get sidetracked from that. And again, I'm proving already, and I want to serve the town. I don't really want anything from it as much as just, I saw an opportunity to do well for the town, and I was a little disappointed last year when I didn't take a chance to run for selectmen. And it was an unopposed race, and I, now it's, we see the swing in the pendulum to a very opposed race with six candidates, I think.
Yep, there's six of you.
So...
Taking a stab at it.
Yep.
Okay. Can you elaborate on any prior experience that you have had serving the town, and how this experience will help you in this position?
Well, as I've said, I'm currently on the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. I think that those are both valuable experiences, because it's helped me to understand the Robert's Rules of Order and how a meeting runs, speaking with the public, and, you know, whether it be in an instance like this, or I just came from my conservation meeting. And I, I think those are valuable parts of, you know, that position. And I guess that's all my town experience that I can honestly say, but I do think those are valuable things.
Okay. Valuable background for being a selectman?
Yes.
Okay. What do you think of the most pressing issues facing the town of Lakeville today? And what would you do if you were on the board to help address them?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Sure.
The first part?
What do you think are the most pressing issues facing the town of Lakeville today? And what would you do if you were on the board to help address them?
Well, recently, we had an override vote that was for some paving, where we didn't have the money in the coffers to pay for it, so we went for the override. When I say we, the selectmen offered up the vote to the town to either choose or oppose that. In instances like that, which I think that is going to be an ongoing issue for the town, is we do need to do a lot of paving, and if the funds aren't there, to come up with a way. And at town meeting, I spoke out against the marijuana...
Coming to town?
Yeah, the, all forms of dispensary and legalization to be sold in town. But I do kind of view that as, it could be a valuable income stream for the town if it's managed properly, which is, I think, very important, that it be managed properly. I don't want to see a lot more dispensary or the host-community agreements given out, but I think we should focus on the ones that are there and try to make sure that those companies can help to generate the tax dollars we need to then do the paving. And we wait until we have that money in order to spend it. I think that's one of the biggest issues we have right now, is just some of the added budget things that we'll face, and how do we pay those? And I think that's, first thing that comes to mind is to try to cultivate the tax dollars that we would gain from marijuana sales.
Okay. All right. What role do you see the board playing in preserving the character of the town of Lakeville? And what should, what should we continue to preserve, and what do we need to consider to change?
Well, multifaceted question. I think that the Board of Selectmen, I mean, they can help to preserve because they are the appointing committee for several, or they're the appointing board for several committees in town, be it Conservation Commission, the Open Space Committee, zoning board of appeals, in which, you know, they're going to be the interviewing party that picks those people that are going to make those decisions, which are a direct reflection of the Board of Selectmen. The character, I think, in town that needs to be saved, I think it's that hometown USA kind of, more of a rural town than a commercial town. But changes that need to happen in town probably are just that as well. We need some commercial development as town goes on. Those are also valuable tax revenue streams coming from a business that doesn't put children in the school system, as long as it's done well. Attractive buildings, which that's a planning board thing, which I am familiar with, which I would like to say that I was not on the planning board when the Dollar Tree thing went through. And it, they're all good people on the planning board, and were then, but I know there was some point of contention about that building. So I don't want to be labeled as the guy that approved it. So again, I mean, I think commercial development is important in town, but it needs to be done right. It needs to be done on Main Street, not in on little weirdly zoned industrial parcels in town. And some of those things are out of the Board of Selectmen's control, but I'm, for example, the design of those buildings in purview through the planning board. But they, this Board of Selectmen could help with maybe a review of bylaws to clean up how that process goes. Did I hit all the points? Going off memory?
No, you hit all the points. That's fine. Is there anything else that you might like to add that you feel is important that the citizens should know about, that we didn't touch on?
And again, I'm not on social media.
Several people?
Yep. Well, I guess there's a lot of people that are. I hear a lot of feedback sometimes. Again, it's, to me, it's water off a duck's back, but I think it's probably valuable for me to talk about. In the past, it's probably been a nine-month process, but I purchased the old police station. The town put it out for public bid. It was advertised, and a real estate agency had it on their website, and I was the only bidder. And I know that's a point of contention for some people who want to maybe bombastically throw out a tweet or a Facebook post about how something went underhandedly. I was the only guy, and I didn't pay a dollar, I paid a lot more. I, it's all, I assume it's all...
Public knowledge.
Recorded in public knowledge through those meetings, the Board of Selectmen's meetings. I presented a letter of my intent. They are holding me to, I actually had to post a bond that guarantees that I tear down the building, and if I don't, they'll tear it down with my money. So I want to kind of clear the record on that, that there was no backroom deal, it was all, like I said, publicly advertised, and I was the only bidder. I was the only person that went to the walkthrough on the building. And so I know that they've had to defend themselves about that, but I think a lot of people weren't very engaged, or they just want to step in afterwards and just say something.
Okay. Anything else besides that? Anything else about maybe what you might want to do as a Board of Selectmen?
Well, again, I mean, I think just to keep the town on the straight and narrow, and to keep us within a budget limit that we can afford without having to raise the taxes on the townspeople. I know that as soon as the new police station was finished, which is a beautiful building, there was some talk from the fire department that maybe we could be next. So I'm, I'm not saying that that's the case, that's obviously, that would be a town vote thing. But how that gets managed, is that another tax increase? I think that's more of a ballot question, but it's something that's probably going to have to be broached in the next three to five years. And if that's the case, I might be a selectman, and, I mean, I would be favorable towards the new fire department if it's affordable and doesn't overburden the townspeople.
Okay. All right. Well, I would like to thank you, Mark, for your thoughts and comments, and for coming in.